Barry, 11th, 2020, regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Kathy Wagner from Outreach Children's Ministry will do the invocation tonight. We will be led in the pledge of allegiance by our city treasurer, David Patterson.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. We're celebrating the week of Valentine's. So this verse is very appropriate, I believe. My command is this: Love each other as I have loved you. John 15:12. Heavenly Father, as we prepare for this meeting, this helps us to remember that we should love each other. We don't have to always like each other. We do need to love each other. We need to take care, think, and listen to what each others are saying as we go into this meeting tonight, that we are doing things that you would be glad that we are doing. We thank you for this wonderful city that lets us do this. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. We're gonna move along with the agenda here. It shouldn't take that long. So let's just move along as efficiently as we can today. City Clerk Jimenez has a presentation on the agenda, Voting Solutions for All People. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, if Laura Herrera could please come up to the podium, she is gonna be presenting for us tonight. And we purposely set this up at the beginning so everyone in the audience can listen to her presentation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jimenez, and thank you so much to you, council. My name is Laura Herrera and I am from the LA County Registered Recorder County Clerk's Office. I'm so happy to speak to you today about LA County's new voting experience, Voting Solutions for All People. Before I begin, I do want to talk about what an amazing partner the City of Hawthorne has been throughout this entire process. We've conducted several meetings in the City of Hawthorne, including a Vote Center Placement Project meeting here. We had a mock election site in September in the City of Hawthorne. And we've worked really, really well with Dr. Jimenez's office, as well as, I wanted to shout out two special people, Vaughn Norris and Kiwana Bowie from the Recreation and Community Services Department. They have been instrumental in securing vote center sites in the City of Hawthorne and also helping to plan meetings here, use public facilities. It's been a really great and useful partnership in allowing us to spread the message about this new voting experience through to the residents of Hawthorne and the surrounding communities. So I did want to go through LA County's new voting experience with all of you to really talk about how Voting Solutions for All People was launched by the RRCC, the LA County Registered Recorder County Clerk, over 10 years ago to really address an aging voting system. We have a voting jurisdiction of 5.4 million registered voters, which means we have more voters in LA County than in 42 states in the country. So we needed to build a voting system that worked around LA County voters' needs. So we wanted to make sure that it was convenient for LA County voters to cast their ballot. And we wanted to make sure that it's accessible to everyone, meaning that no matter your level of disability or the different needs that you have, that you're able to use the voting equipment that we designed. We also want to make sure that security is at the top of our priority list as well while introducing new technology, making sure that security is at the top of our list. But at the end of the day, we want to make sure that LA County residents have increased options for people to cast their ballot. So this is the overall component of the VSAP solution, where we have different types of features that will allow LA County voters to have the option for where, when, and how they vote. So when you see right there in the middle, it's called our ballot marking device. That is what voters will use to cast their paper ballot. And I'll go through each of the individual components in detail. We're also gonna introduce electronic poll books, moving away from paper rosters for a way for voters to check in at vote centers. Also introducing a modern tally system, so that's our way to securely, efficiently count our ballots, both the ballot marking device ballot and the vote-by-mail ballots. Introducing an interactive sample ballot, which I'll go over in detail. But really moving away from a one-day model where voters only have one option, one polling place on one day to vote, to a vote center model where any LA County voter can go to any vote center in the county for 11 full days of in-person voting. And then I'll talk about the new vote-by-mail experience that we already implemented in 2018. So the ballot marking device is that picture that you see up there on the screen. And I see, I know that everyone is looking at that first feature, which is that modern touchscreen. But the first thing I want to say is, is this connected to the internet? Absolutely not. It is not connected to any network, any internet connection, any Bluetooth. It's actually a standalone device that they operate independent of one another. So if there's more ballot marking devices in a vote center, you're still working with one ballot marking device. And it prints a paper ballot. So this is a paper ballot system that a voter can verify, insert into the ballot marking device, mark their paper ballot, and verify twice before casting their ballot directly on the ballot marking device. So this device itself does not count any votes. It does not tally any of the votes. It's simply marking that paper ballot. And the way to do that, so that everyone can use the same device, it has several accessibility features. So no matter what type of voter you are, you're using the same device. So you can actually tilt the screen to adjust to your height, or if you need to be seated or using a wheelchair, the legs are wide enough to be able to do that, and you can tilt it to that height as well. You can also adjust the font size to your viewing style. You can also change the color and contrast. So if you have sight visibility issues, you can actually gray out the background to make it much easier to see. You can also use a tactile keypad to navigate through the ballot if you are a blind voter or have sighted issues as well. You can also listen and read your ballot in 13 different languages. And this is all up to the voter to choose the voting experience that they need to cast their ballot, which really offers for a private and independent voting experience, which millions of people have never been able to do until now. So I actually have an instructional video of the ballot marking device for everyone to see what it's like to use the ballot marking device if you're using the touchscreen. So I'm also gonna talk about the interactive sample ballot. I do want to say that this is an option for voters to do to help expedite or make their voting experience much faster. But we will still send every registered voter their sample ballot in the mail, and people can still use their sample ballot, go to a vote center, and pre-mark their selections on their paper sample ballot and use it as a guide. But now this interactive sample ballot is a way for folks to do that, but using technology that they're already used to using, like they're on their mobile phone, the tablet, or a computer, where they go to lavote.net, they pull up their specific ballot style, and they pre-mark their selections before they go to a vote center. And when they get there, they're still getting their paper ballot, putting it into the ballot marking device. But they're choosing to use their poll pass, which is that QR code that's right there in the middle, that essentially is scanned directly into the ballot marking device, as demonstrated by the woman in the picture, and it takes you directly to the review screen, so eliminating the time that you need to spend at a vote center selecting the contest one by one. Since all of you know, we've consolidated elections, our city elections, on the same calendar. So there may be a ballot with 30, 40, 50 ballot contests on it. And so this is a way to make that much faster, because all of you know, we are all very busy people, and we may not have time to spend too much time at a vote center, making this much faster. I do want to say, though, that, like I said, this is just an option. If you don't use the interactive sample ballot, you can still vote as normal. This is just a way to make that experience faster. So the electronic poll books is essentially what is going to be used to replace the printed list of voters, which makes it possible for any LA County voter to go to any vote center, because all 5.4 million registered voters will be in the electronic poll book. So a voter will give their name and their address, and they will pull up their voter registration. And the voter will be able to check their voter registration eligibility there and do electronic signature verification to get their paper ballot. So this is what makes it possible, because it prints essentially on your ballot a QR code that tells the ballot marking device what specific ballot style you're eligible for, even if you're not in your home city. So if you live in Hawthorne, but you happen to be in Culver City and want to vote there because it's much more convenient, you'll get your Hawthorne contest. And so this also allows people to do conditional voter registration. So that's the ability for people to register to vote and vote on the same day. So before, in the past, if you missed the voter registration deadline, you wouldn't be able to vote in these large elections or in any election. But this way, if you missed that deadline, you're still able to go to a vote center, do a conditional voter registration, and you're able to vote, really capturing a lot of people that missed a lot of elections because of this. What's great, too, is it also indicates if a voter has already voted anywhere in the county, so it doesn't allow for multiple votes. And everything happens in real time, which means the second you check into a vote center, it'll say where, when, and what time you went. So if you tried to go anywhere else, it won't allow you to vote again for that extra level of security. So I'll talk about the improved vote-by-mail ballot as well. So this is something that we introduced in November 2018, and it was very successful, because we essentially went from a Scantron booklet vote-by-mail experience to a full-faced ballot, where all of the instructions and all of the contests are on the ballot itself, making it so much easier to know who you're voting for, to mark your ballot, and to send back your ballot. What we did, too, is introduce vote-by-mail drop boxes. We had about 150 in November 2018. We're now moving toward 250 vote-by-mail drop boxes all throughout the county. And we have, many of them are permanent drop box locations, which are these incredibly looking boxes that are highly secure. They weigh 1,000 pounds empty, so if anybody tries to run away with them, unless they're Superman or the Hulk, they're not running away with that box. We also are allowing for no postage necessary to be on boxes, on ballots, I'm sorry, to be able to turn them in, so eliminating that obstacle as well. And so we will still have vote-by-mail ballots moving forward. We're just making it easier to turn in your ballot. You can also turn in your ballot at any vote center as well, giving vote-by-mail voters lots of options to be able to turn in their ballot. The extended voting period, so this is actually my favorite part of the entire experience, because it's allowing people to vote in person for up to 11 days, which includes two weekends, really allowing people to decide when they're able to vote, when it's convenient for them, at any vote center. And so the vote-by-mail drop boxes, they're available for 30 full days. So they have been available since February 3rd. And vote centers are open for a minimum of eight hours a day on days that are non-election days. So vote center hours for this election are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the 10 first days, but we will retain election hours 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Election Day. And so all of the vote center locations, I want to point out, are gonna be available to LA County voters. So starting on February 24th, all vote center locations are on lavote.net. So if you're interested to know where vote center locations are, there's a voter lookup tool that any voter can use right on lavote.net. I do want to say there are six vote centers in the City of Hawthorne, but of course, you're able to go anywhere else as well. I do want to point out, too, that we actually mailed this pamphlet, which has all vote center locations, not just to registered voters, but to any LA County resident who has a postal address, regardless of if they're registered. So they'll have the ability to know about VSAP, all of the different changes, and have access to the vote center locations as well. So just to talk a little bit more about vote centers. So we will have approximately 1,000 conveniently located vote centers around your home, school, work, etc. Essentially, we have 972 vote centers for this upcoming election. And it really allows people to cast their ballot at any vote center in the county, as I mentioned. And what's great about this is that they can be located in a variety of locations, including public buildings, workplaces, places of worship, a lot of places that people have identified where they feel comfortable voting, where they voted in the past. But we also have the ability to put them in shopping centers or in different areas where we're bringing voting to LA County voters, making it easier to cast their ballot. I do want to talk about a little bit about our mobile vote centers. This is an example of one of our three mobile voting units that we can actually deploy at high-traffic areas, like farmers' markets, or a concert, or a sporting event, where we really want to build awareness about voting throughout that 11-day voting period. But we're also offering in-person voting services. So if you happen to be going to a concert, and we have the mobile voting unit there, you can actually cast your ballot right there at the mobile voting units. We have POPA vote centers as well, which can be used as a contingency plan. And we also are introducing VSAP Flex Vote Centers. So this is our way to extend, expand our flexible voting options for seniors or people experiencing homelessness, incarcerated voters, or voters with disabilities, where we're doing one-day Flex Vote Centers in these targeted locations to ensure that we can actually make it easier for specific communities to be able to cast their ballot. This is a sample configuration of a large vote center. So we actually will have three different sizes. Where a small will have approximately 10 ballot marking devices, a medium will have approximately 30, and a large will have 50. So you would see that there is a voting area with the ballot marking devices, and the blue folks that are all around them are essentially voting area monitors. So if you needed any additional help to be able to use the ballot marking device or needed help to navigate the ballot, they will be there to help you do that. We'll also have e-poll book checking clerks, and those are the folks who are gonna check you in and get your paper ballot. We'll have a supervisor role that essentially will oversee the operations of the entire vote center. We'll also have a line monitor, so this is a person who's gonna be out front, really answering questions. If people have anxieties or questions about the voting experience, they'll be able to answer questions, but also navigate people to the correct service that they need. So if they are filling out a conditional voter registration, or they want to turn in their vote-by-mail ballot, or they want to go ahead and just use a ballot marking device, they're gonna move that line along quickly and efficiently. And we'll also have a location so that a person can drop off their vote-by-mail ballot with the central ballot box as well. I'll do this fast. So this is the process that a voter will go through once they arrive at a vote center. They'll go ahead and check in with their electronic poll book. They'll receive their paper ballot, take that paper ballot and code to the ballot marking device, and then essentially either choose the poll pass or vote normally. Either voter will then review their ballot on the review screen, then cast their ballot directly on the ballot marking device, and then everyone gets their favorite part of voting, which is their "I voted" sticker. So I have a quick 30-second animated video which will wrap everything up, and then I can go ahead and take questions.
The election is just around the corner, and Los Angeles County has a new way for voters to make their voices heard. New Los Angeles County Vote Centers are located throughout the county. Cast your ballot near your home, work, or favorite park. Voters can go anywhere. To find a vote center that's convenient, visit lavote.net and find one that works best for you. Instead of waiting for one day to vote, you are now able to vote across 11 days. Once you've arrived, a vote center assistant will greet you and check you in before taking you to the ballot marking device. Did you know that there is a new interactive sample ballot that lets you pre-mark your selections online and generate a poll pass? A unique QR code that will let you quickly transfer, review, and cast your selections on a paper ballot at the county vote center. The new ballot marking device includes an audio ballot, a touchscreen, and a tactile keypad to make voting faster and more accessible. You can also select your language, change the font size, and adjust the contrast for easy viewing. Then, after you make your selections or scan your poll pass, you can review your ballot to verify your choices and cast your ballot by feeding the paper ballot back into the ballot marking device. There's no need to give your ballot to a vote center assistant. You cast it on the same device. Welcome to the future of voting in Los Angeles County. Fast, convenient, and easy. Go to vsap.lavote.net to exercise your right to vote and let your voice be heard.
And one last note, I just want to just say that Election Day, we tend to think about things in terms of Election Day, is March 3rd. However, the first vote centers in this election will open February 22nd, and then the next series of vote centers will open on February 29th, really allowing for everybody to start voting early. And I want to encourage everyone to vote early, avoid the long lines, and vote early. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we'll just move on to the next item?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Just one.
Sure.
You mentioned that this isn't tied to the internet, that every voting machine is self-contained. Yet you can know if I voted in Culver City. How is that if I came to Hawthorne afterwards to vote again? How would you know if there's no internet connection?
Sure, so the electronic poll book is connected to a highly secure network, not just any random internet connection or a data connection. It's connected to a secure network, to our Norwalk headquarters, and that's how that happens in real time. But that's a completely separate process from the actual voting on the ballot marking device. So the check-in process is connected to a network, which will allow that real-time verification. But voting on the ballot marking device, which is not connected to the internet, is that separate process, and that's how you're marking your paper ballot.
You have two stations.
Two separate.
It's two stations, basically.
Okay.
You have to check in in one station.
No, I understand that, but it was the idea that it could not be hacked.
Right, so the actual voting, so what we're counting, when we count your votes, is your anonymous paper ballot. And so that's what's tallied at our Norwalk headquarters to produce the election results. The checking in is simply giving us the ability to print your paper ballot. And that's a separate process from actually marking your ballot and casting your ballot.
Maybe I'll have a question.
Sure.
Thank you for coming in tonight. So it's great, you know, for people to see, you know, especially the videos, because there has been a lot of questioning about the hacking. But just tell them that all the paper ballot that goes in, those things that are transported after 8:00 PM to Norwalk, and that's where the count begins.
Yes, so what happens is that every day, the ballots are safely transported with lots of chain-of-custody procedures from vote centers to our Norwalk headquarters to be tallied. But no election results will be released until after 8:00 PM on Election Day. We can pre-process them and get them ready to be tallied, but nothing will be counted until after 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. City Manager Arnold Schadber and Police Chief Michael Ishi have a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It is my great pleasure to introduce to you our Super Task Force team. This team meets on a daily basis and communicates regularly regarding high-priority community issues of homelessness and safety, led by Police Department Metro Unit Personnel and Code Enforcement Officer Steve Borout, and occasionally supported by Public Works Maintenance Personnel. This team's main priority is connecting with and serving our homeless community five days a week. They begin before the sunrise, checking on members of our community who are struggling through the hardest times in their lives. This team makes sure they are safe, offers services and connection to our local community service providers, such as social services, housing, healthcare facilities, sand, margaritas, and others. And in some instances, is able to connect them to transitional and permanent housing. They put their hearts into this work every day, continually serving the community while most of us are asleep. With that, I would like our Chief of Police and also Public Works Director Allen to introduce this Super Team to the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Really gives me, it's a privilege and honor to be able to recognize our employees here in this manner in front of our council and our community. The Crime Improvement, our Community Improvement Task Force was created, as City Manager mentioned, a few years ago. And one of the main issues we wanted to deal with was to ability for the city... ability for the city to address long-term issues. We're very good at getting, you know, solving problems quickly, and, and we respond from one call to another, over thirty thousand in, in the Police Department, but we wanted to find a way to, to be able to serve our community and, and address long-term issues. Obviously, the, one of the biggest ones is our homeless population and, and the ability to deal with that issue as people and, and working in, in various aspects of that. In addition to that, you know, with our partnerships with Public Works, with the Parks Department, with the City Attorney's Office, with Code Enforcement, you know, we're able to really establish long-term relationships so that we can address these types of long-term issues. And truly, they've made a difference in our community on a day-to-day basis. So what I wanted to do tonight was with the City Manager and with Public Works Director to recognize the men and women out here that are really working really hard and, and under very difficult circumstances, to continue to make our community safe and to be able to offer help and, and provide long-term solutions that I think our community deserves and, and wants. So that's why we're here tonight. So what I'd like to do, there's plenty, there's, there's a lot of them here, and we wanted to recognize as many as possible. I'd like to call their names out, and then after I do that, I'd like to, I'd love to have them come up and, and get a photo with our, with our council in doing that. Included in this is, is our gang team. This is basically on the Police Department over here, we have our, our Metro Unit, which includes our gang team, along with our, our Metro Detectives and our Mental Health Team, and I'll introduce them also here. And together with our help from Public Works, I, I'm, I'm happy tonight, along with the City Manager and Public Works Director, to have them recognized publicly. That's why I'm here. So they're led under Lieutenant Joel Romero, who's over here, and our investigators are Sergeant Jose Saldana, Detectives Bradley Jackson, Michael Matson, Sean Judd, Jesus Siniceros, Officer Alex Khan, and over here is also our social worker from the Department of Mental Health, who's assigned to us almost full-time. We partner with her with Gardena PD to offer the help and, and services to our community. So I'd like for them to come up. And then for our Public Works folks back here, I'd like to recognize Joel Hernandez, Steve Burrell, who is, where's Steve? I think he's over here with the Police Department, and Jesse Galan, Jaime Villareal, Danny James or James?
James.
Not like the soccer player. Okay, all right. And Frankie Contreras, Luis Gonzalez, Mike Kearns, Steve Gonzalez, Alex Sanchez, and Jorge Flor. And so I hope that as a community, we'll be able to recognize them tonight. Thank you very much. So as you set up here, I also, real quickly, wanted to read the Certificate of Appreciation that each one will receive. And also, before this, I also want to recognize Sergeant Larry Gaheta, who retired, but he was really instrumental in helping us get this done and being a part of the team. So in recognition of your hard work and accomplishments within the Task Force Unit in the City of Hawthorne, we are proud to have you as part of our community. Your efforts are much appreciated. Presented on this day, the eleventh of February, 2020, at City Council meetings. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Oh, come on now. I think you learned from me, man. Oh, really? Yeah, like.
Oh, why, they're leaving altogether. We didn't say that.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, folks, let's move on. Mr. Clerk, please read the Guidelines for Oral Communications, sir.
Yes. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of the oral communications to refer your remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Jim Radek, please. How you doing, sir?
Hello, sir. Good evening. My name is James Radek, R-A-D-E-K, 3822 West 144th Street in Hawthorne. And I'm here to talk about all the property taxes being put on our, our bills, our, to vote for. Losinger, the high school district, has a big one, and they've been doing that for years. One time, they used to allow senior citizens and disabled to get an exemption, but a couple years ago, they stopped doing that. They said that they lose too much money. And earlier this year, you, five people here in the council, all our politicians throughout the state, all agreed that we have to do rent control so people don't get kicked out of their apartments by rents going up. Homeowners had the same problem. As property taxes go up, people start feeling a pinch. So you guys took, said you didn't want it. Nope, no, we're putting rent control on. How about you guys taking a stand and saying, "Vote no" on the property taxes because you're going to run us out of our homes? Thank you.
Thank you, sir, but, but for the record, we did not implement rent control. Your governor, the one that you guys voted for, is the one that did.
But you guys all agreed.
No, we didn't agree. What we did was, since that's already law, we wanted to extend it back to make sure that current apartment owners weren't, weren't threatening existing apartment renters. That's it.
I would, I would advise you to check with the county, because the seniors, if they put it on that ballot that we vote maybe like five years ago, ten years ago, if it was attached to that proposition, they cannot change that. So I would say, hold on, I would say for you to check with the county assessor, because I believe the, the seniors still have that discount, and that you have to file a form every year.
The, when the, the last time, Sentinel Valley High School did it, I went looking for the forms, and they said they did away with doing that because it cost them money. And before I could finish my reply to the gentleman in his big chair, security removed me from their properties. So I was upset.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We just can't have a, we, I know we did say a comment, and you did respond, but we just try to avoid that. But thank you, Mr. Radek, for coming. We haven't seen you in a little bit, so it's good to see you.
I'll watch you guys.
Good to see you, sir.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I am, I am William Myers. I am the Treasurer of the Ramona Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to announce the fact that we are having a presentation on the new voting procedures on Thursday, February 13th, at seven o'clock to eight-thirty, and we're having it at the Ramona Elementary School at 4617 West 136th Street. And we're going to be taking a look, we actually have a ballot marking device, which will be there, so you can, so you can actually learn how to use it before you go to the ballot, before you go to the, to the voting centers. And we're also going to probably, we're expecting to work with the interactive sample ballot as well, which you saw Laura demonstrate in her videos. We're also going to be talking about the voter, the changes to the vote-by-mail procedures with no postage and drop boxes that seem to be all over the place, including our City Clerk's office. And we're going to be, and one thing that was not mentioned was, we're going to be working with ballot tracks where your, your ballot, your ballot is being tracked from the time you turn it in until the time it goes to, it goes to, to be counted. And then the other thing, there are a couple of problems we want to talk about. For example, several of us here in the, in the City of Hawthorne, we didn't get the, the Fire Department measure on our ballots, and so they had to send out a special notice that we're going to be talking about. And, and also, we didn't, for those of us who are, are, not, have no party preference, we also didn't get the, the, the card that allows us to, to vote in other party primaries and, and what to do about it and so forth. So we're hopefully that we, that the people, we put out the, the invitation to everybody we could to, to come and, and join us on Thursday evening so that we can, you know, cover this topic in a, in a very, very, in a, in a, in a complete manner. All right, thank you, sirs. Appreciate it.
That's at seven?
Pardon me? It's at seven, yes, sir.
And it's also on the Hawthorne calendar.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to take side, side, side discussion, not discussion, I'm going to let you guys know about what happened with the LA County Fire item. Do you know about that, too?
Yeah.
Can you just, brief statement for the benefit of the residents, please?
Yeah, so basically, one of the measures was off of the ballot that was provided to, that was sent out to everybody that was going to do a mailing ballot. So basically, the county sent an additional ballot, specifically providing people the opportunity to also vote for that specific ballot for the Fire Department. So if you haven't received it already, you should be receiving it soon. I actually received mine today, so, but that's basically the issue.
And it is an acknowledged mistake by the LA County Recorders, but they are sending the supplemental ballot.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, fortunately, it didn't impact all cities in the county, but Hawthorne was one of the cities that was impacted.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, Gordon Mike, Kathy Wagner, please, if she's still here. Hi, Kathy.
Making a habit of this, aren't I? Outreach Children's Ministry, Kathy Wagner teaches J.C. Bible Clubs in public schools and parks, and we are having our annual fundraiser. We collect clothes, they give us a check so that we can do more ministry out in the parks and during spring break. So I'm inviting you to participate. It's clothes that you might have got, might, got new clothes for Christmas, and you're not wearing something that you used, that you used to wear, and so you can donate it to the, to the cause, and we get a check, like I said, and we, then we can do more things with the kids. And we've been doing this for ten years, and we really would like you to participate. So I have invitations for you guys to participate, and then I'll leave a few of the invitations. The fundraiser is Sundays, the sixteenth, at My Home Church, which is Restoration Life Christian Church, and then we have a second location in Torrance. So if you don't get up at eight o'clock, nine-thirty, or eleven-thirty, you can drop it off at two-thirty in the afternoon as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'd like to welcome El Camino College Trustee Nilo Michelin, who is here. How you doing, sir? Would you like to come up and talk to us? You got something to tell us, some good news? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to be back. My name is Nilo Michelin. I'm your representative on the El Camino Board of Trustees. That's like the City Council only for El Camino. So first of all, I'd like to thank all my friends up in the City Council for a very successful Business Expo last January 29th. El Camino was there, we participated, and it was a great event. Hawthorne residents were able to find out about how to start a business and all the great businesses over here in Hawthorne. And don't forget, we have the El Camino Business Training Center right here in Hawthorne, on Hawthorne Boulevard, at 13430 Hawthorne Boulevard. We can learn all about Hawthorne businesses, how to start a business. So if you got started at the Business Expo and you want more information, please come to our Training Center right there on 13430 Hawthorne Boulevard. I was talking to Mr. Balboa, and he told me that him and his wife went to El Camino, his daughter went to El Camino, and his granddaughter's going to El Camino right now. So it's a great tradition, and we are continuing that tradition. So I'm proud to announce that we're going to have the grand opening of our brand-new, state-of-the-art gymnasium Friday, February 21st, at three PM. This facility will provide training for our student athletes, we're very, very proud of that. And I gave some invitations to the City Clerk, and I'm going to put some invitations out on the table. So we hope to see you there on Friday, February 21st, at three PM, not this Friday, but the Friday afterwards. If you have any questions about the grand opening or about El Camino, please give me a call at 310-435-7472, or you can leave a message at El Camino by calling directly. Thank you very much. It was great to see everybody. Happy New Year.
It's good to see you. Thank you for coming back, a homecoming for you. Excellent. And you're a continued, you're a Hawthorne resident, so that's...
I was a Hawthorne resident.
All right, good stuff.
Thank you.
I'm Gordon Michael Migo. Councilmember emeritus. How you like that? All right. Mr. Migo?
Hello, everyone. Gordon Michael Migo. A Daily Breeze, February 4th editorial by Robert Gutierrez, President of California Taxpayers Association. LA County officials are doing what they always do when county-sponsored tax increases are on the ballot, using your tax dollars to campaign for the tax hike. The LA County Fire Department slash on Measure FD, the property tax increase on the March 3rd ballot, includes little more than campaign talking points by political consultants to encourage you to vote yes. There isn't a single word about how the tax would increase housing costs and retail prices during the midst of an affordability crisis. The education materials also fail to mention that the tax has no expiration date, lacks an impartial appeals process, and has a senior exemption that is narrower than most. This shouldn't be taken as a criticism of the firefighters and paramedics who put their lives on the line every day to protect us all. Firefighting and paramedic services are vital and do require tax dollars. This doesn't mean, however, that every new tax is necessary. Measure FD would make it more expensive to buy or rent a home or a business. It also would increase the cost of utilities. Those are deal breakers. Adding to the financial crisis or strain of people living here, especially those that are teetering... especially those that are teetering on the edge of homelessness, would be irresponsible. There are other problems with the poorly drafted measure. For example, it would allow the fire chief to develop the procedures for a senior exemption and the appeals process, a huge conflict of interest. The tax would increase up to 2% a year, compounding overtime with no end. Since the county wouldn't have to periodically answer to the voters, accountability will be lost. The money would keep flowing regardless of audits or media reports that uncover waste or misuse of tax dollars. The proposed tax increase comes at a time when county revenue has increased more than 33% just since 2015, thanks largely to the windfalls from the current property taxes. County revenue for 2019, 2020 was $9 billion higher than in 2015, 16. So top priority services, like the fire department, should be receiving the funds, more if necessary. Measure FD was rushed to the ballot without public input, and it shows. The measure lacks taxpayer safeguards, raises fairness concerns, and would make LA even less affordable. Voters should reject this deeply flawed measure and vote no on Measure FD. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the city council?
To the city council and to the many city friends that I have, I'm so appreciative. I've spent six weeks in Sentinela, four weeks in December, the rest in this, but I tell you, I've never in my life been so loved by friends and flowers. One of the nurses said, "Miss Love, who are you?" Everybody calls, everybody wants to know how you're doing. And I said, "Well, you know, it's kind of like putting new parts to an old car." And I said, "It seems like they get one thing working, something else goes out." But thank you. And but the Balboas, they saw that everything was up too far for me. Thank you so much for kind. These are some love people. They are beautiful people to know. But to all of you, the flowers were beautiful, the love, the calls. You're really making me feel like I'm somebody that's really something. But thanks again. And I had congestive heart failure. Then I had some more problems that they had to tighten up. But hopefully, he put a little more time on the books for me. Thanks to all of you. I love you. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed. Order. Mr. Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have seven items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item 7, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting of January 28th, 2020. Item 8, approval waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 9, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item 11, Resolution Number 8163, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, calling and giving notice to of a general municipal election to be held in the city of Hawthorne for the election of certain officers, requesting consolidation with statewide general elections scheduled for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, and requesting that the Board of Supervisors issues instructions to the registrar recorder to take any and all steps necessary for holding of the consolidated election. Item 12, Resolution Number 8164, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the month of February 2020 as Black History Month. Motion to adopt. Item 13, Resolution Number 8165, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing a gift program for 1 Earth Day and Service Provider Fair, 2, the Veterans Recognition Event, 3, World Fest, and 4, the Hawthorne Business Expo 2021. Item 14, Resolution Number 8166, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to confirm and implement the provisions of the Hawthorne Parking Facilities Lease between the City of Hawthorne and the Parking Authority of the City of Hawthorne, and that agreement for sublease. Operation and maintenance of parking facilities between the City of Hawthorne and the operator of the public facilities, providing for the transfer of title to public facilities, which are part of the Hawthorne Plaza Project, to the operator upon request of the operator following the final payment and retirement of special tax refunding bonds issued by the Parking Authority for adoption.
I'd like to pull item 12.
14. That's it? All right, I make a motion on all other items?
Second.
Please. Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay. I think, yeah, his was first. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Discussion on 12.
I just wanted to say a word about Black History Month. As you know, it's the annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans and a time for recognizing the central role of blacks in U.S. history, particularly with respect to achieving rights, which all other groups have used the lessons learned in the civil rights movement as a model for their own movements. The Black History Month grew out of Negro History Week, which was the brainchild of noted historian Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African-Americans. And I would like for you to read the city's executive summary in the Agenda Bill, which is really a beautifully put-together executive summary describing a lot of the history of Black History Month and also places that you can go to observe, observances of Black History Month. So I call your attention to the Agenda item number 12. And I want to thank the city attorney for putting that together for us. And with that, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 8164.
Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item 14, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to touch base on item 14 and kind of let the public know what's kind of going on. So for Resolution 14 of transferring the title to the Charles Company, which is basically the Hawthorne Mall on Hawthorne Boulevard, there are three points within the resolution that I wanted to point out. Item B is determine, in order for the title to be transferred, B is determine what amount, if any, shall continue to be paid to the city by the owner and the amount of citations for unauthorized parking and uses of the parking facilities by other companies. Item F, upon request of the owner and operator, consider approval of any assignment and assumption agreement of the rights of the owner to a proposed purchaser of the rights to receive title to the parking facility. And the last one I wanted to point was G, any other actions required to complete the transaction, including the extent required in order to close escrow, the termination of the facility lease, the parking sublease, and the Parking Authority and reciprocal easement agreement for the Hawthorne Plaza. So those three points are kind of showing how the aggressive stance that we've taken with our citations to really clean up the city as well as some of the blighted properties in the area, it's showing our continued commitment to really revolutionize and get something open on the Boulevard to really get moving. There are stipulations in there showing that there is movement at the mall site. Now, just because we transferred the title and we didn't get the bond issued, doesn't mean it's going to be automatically into escrow to the new purchaser. All this is doing now is putting our hard line and saying, "Look, we've continued to put pressure on the project and on your site." We will continue to keep that pressure going if some of these items are not met in order to push the mall into development. So I just wanted to kind of thank the council and, you know, the city attorney and Arnie for the aggressive stance we've taken to pushing the, to heighten up the citation fees, as also pushing in the vacancy fees to really start some kind of movement in the city of Hawthorne. And we've seen a lot of growth recently and a lot of cleanup. I think the Hawthorne Mall really did a good job on giving it a little facelift to make it attractive for future buyers. But, yeah, I just wanted to thank Russell and Arnie and staff here in our city council for pushing those policies forward and really kind of getting things rolling. But is the city manager, is it correct to kind of say that our aggressive stance has finally made some kind of movement towards getting the mall moving?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you and thank all the city council, which took an unprecedented solid position with regards to mall that had never been experienced before. So your solid position on this sent a strong message to the mall owners. And you are seeing the result of it. And as you mentioned, hopefully, it will come to fruition with regards to, you know, either developing or selling it to a developer, hopefully to a savvy developer. So thank you so much for your stance on this and taking this approach.
It was a quite difficult stance, being who the owner is. It's kind of scary for certain electors to kind of take on such a task and a monster of a project. And the fact that we stayed strong and didn't kind of fickle down when he came back and said, "Look, I want more, I want less," whatever the case might be, is showing that even after this, if he doesn't push forward, we're going to continue the pressure and not let up. And hopefully with the fines that were still there, it hopefully gives our office a little more leeway in letting our city attorney's office kind of push him into doing it. So again, yeah, this is beautiful. That's about it.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Arnie and Russell, so just my understanding, right, that the mall owner, the Charles Company, have made that final payment for the parking bond, right? So that's the reason this resolution is here. So it's going to go forward, but like Mr. Haidar has mentioned, that we're going to still doing our, doing intelligent of, you know, those other fines that if he does not comply with our code regulation. But he has made that payment that we were waiting for.
Correct, yes.
Right, thank you.
I guess I make the motion, item 14?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar. Mr. Mayor?
Item 16.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing to receive public comments on the draft substantial amendment to the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan and approval of the substantial amendment to the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan to be submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The city clerk department's declaration publication filed, no written communications were received.
Okay, there's oral communication on this item. Anybody wanting to speak on this item? If not, I'll declare oral communications on this item closed. Like to make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item 18.
Urance Number 2196, First Reading in Urance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, Amending Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.80, Airport Rules and Regulations of the Hawthorne Municipal Code for Sponsoring or Hosting Events at the Hawthorne Airport, Including Filming and Food Trucks at the Hawthorne Municipal Airport. For introduction.
I'll introduce.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, your consent calendar, please?
Yes, I have items 20 through 22.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
Ms. Valentin? The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mr. City Manager, please.
Mr. Mayor, can you ask our finance director for the mid-year budget report to come to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pratim and council. I'm going to review with you our mid-year report. If you take a look at the screen, you'll see that our revenues at this point, as of December 31st, 2019, were 26.1 million or 33.7%. Expenditures were 36.35 million, 46.82%, which is normal for this time of year. We collect more, most of our revenues at the second part of the fiscal year. So expenditures exceeded revenues by about 10 point, almost 10.2 million dollars. Our general fund revenues, I'm going to just call your attention to a few that are a little bit out of the ordinary. Licenses and permits are at 69.47%. This is due to new construction within the city. If you look at our investment earnings, you'll see that we're at 145, almost 146%, about $300,000. We had estimated $200,000, so you'll see in our mid-year adjustments, there will be an adjustment for investment earnings. This was due to a change in the way we manage our banking, which I'll explain a little bit once we get to the next section. One area that we always have a question on is vehicle license fees. They are always at zero at the end of the fiscal, at the end of December. But we receive our first payment after property taxes are collected. So in January, we received 5.5 million of that 11 million budgeted amount. The last item I want to mention is other revenue. And that one's at 71.6%. And that is due to higher-than-expected water contribution and also special event reimbursements. So under financial institution, all the balances that we are holding as of December 31st, 2019, you'll see that we have a general account checking balance of 12.1 million. What we changed that caused our investment earnings to increase was that we put a cap on the general account to be at about $12 million. Anything above that will be, was moved into a money market account, which has been paying about 2% interest. And we also have a sweep account. So anytime that the balance in the general account is below the 12 million, that sweep account moves money in to the general account. And anytime it goes over, it sweeps it out. Hence the sweep account. But that is, the total that we have in our Bank of the West accounts is 37.4 million. We have two investment accounts, sorry. Leif is at 12.9, almost 13 million. And Multibank Securities, which is the investments that our treasurer handles, are at 7 million. This is our general fund expenditures by department. Again, I'll just call attention to a couple of the items that are out of the ordinary. And we have our Measure HH, which is at 88.9%, almost 89%. The reason for that is that when we are billed for our fire services and 911 services, we charge Measure HH first and then we begin to charge the fire services line item that's under non-departmental. So that's the only reason that that's kind of out of whack there. If you look at our city clerk line item, it's at 61%. The only reason for that is because we've had an employee on leave and someone else is filling in. That really is, those are the only two items that are kind of out of the ordinary here again. This 46.82% is normal for this time of year.
Any question? Thank you.
Our general fund expenditures by type, I will call your attention to overtime, which is at about 92%. We kind of see this every year. We have, we are constantly filling positions in the police department. Over the past year, we've had, we had five or six vacancies. Five of those vacancies have been filled. But that is why you see this overtime. It's a backfill to those positions that have not been filled. But if you take both of those totals for overtime and salaries, our total for that only brings that to 42.89, almost 43%. But when you look at it in terms of what was budgeted and spent, it just is kind of high. high. And really, those are the only items that are kind of out of the ordinary here. Do you have any questions? And on the last page here, we have our...
You have a question here?
Uh huh.
No, go ahead, finish.
On our last page here, we have our enterprise operating funds. Airport shows expenditures over revenues of about 300,000. We just drew down or requested reimbursement for a couple of grants, so that will bring the revenues and expenditures in line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Felice, thank you for the presentation. It's very clear. So when we, for example, the expenditure, right, we got like a 10 million, so that money, did we take that money out of the cash reserve? Or where did that 10 million come from to pay our debts before we can get the other second, you know, on the first page?
Uh huh.
On the top, right? You have that, the...
Right, so that is why it's important to keep those cash balances, because it provides us a way to continue with operations.
Okay. So that money come from that SWF account that keep moving up now, or?
No, it just comes out of the general checking.
Just comes out of the general, right.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Felice.
The only other item I have is our mid-year adjustments. This is for the general fund, you'll see that we have several transfers. There are accounts or departments that needed additional funds. So we are taking money from one set of accounts and moving them, transferring them over to the accounts that needed additional funds. We are also posting the departmental charges for a bond that was approved in October of last year, and we just need to post those departmental charges and the bond principal and interest, which you can see down on the restricted section. We also show revenues here that came in above what we estimated, and so we are adjusting for those amounts that we feel will come in by the end of the fiscal year. There's also down at the bottom, you'll see that we have several grants, the Edward Burns Memorial JAG Grant, Measure W, and so we, when we receive new grants, we need to adjust our budget as well.
Okay, thank you, Felice.
So basically, at the end of the year, we should feel pretty good, right?
We do.
No surprises.
Too early, too early.
Thanks.
Okay. With that, yeah, you have a question? With that, I have items 24 through 26 for your approval.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item 28.
Parking Authority Resolution Number 74, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Parking Authority of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the interim executive officer to take all actions necessary to confirm and implement the provisions of the Hawthorne Parking Facilities between the City of Hawthorne and the Parking Authority of the City of Hawthorne, and the agreement for sublease operation and maintenance of parking facilities between the City of Hawthorne as sublesser and the operator of the public facilities as subleasee operator, providing for the transfer of title to public facilities, which are part of the Hawthorne Plaza Project, from the Parking Authority to the operator upon request and, oh, sorry, upon request of the operator, following the final payment and retirement of special tax refunding bonds issued by the Parking Authority for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
Mr. Mayor? The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Elected officials' reports.
We need to go back to city managers' consent.
No, we got everything.
You got them all?
Okay. Elected officials' reports. Mr. David Patterson, City Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to thank the community for coming out, participating in the process. Want to wish everybody a happy Black History Month, and also want to express my excitement to see the success of our investment earnings and, you know, with the, you know, the hard work of the Finance Department and, you know, some of the changes that were made, you know, we've definitely seen kind of fruits of that work and those changes. About a year ago, went to a treasurer's conference and had some good conversations with our, our banking partner, which made some suggestions, such as using a sweep account and taking advantage of some of the other products that they have, which kind of led to some, some new cash management strategies, which worked out. So very excited to see that work out. Looks like we're going to, you know, bring in twice as much money as we thought we would as far as investment earnings, and I'm, you know, very excited to see that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk Paul Jimenez?
Yes, I just want to thank everyone who's here tonight and those watching at home. I'm just going to reiterate some information that was provided earlier. So, yeah, the voting season has begun. For those who are voting by mail, so you can mail in your ballot or, you could mail in or drop off your ballot at any of the locations in LA County. And as shared earlier, there are six different locations in Hawthorne. And if you're looking to find out more about the locations within LA County, go to lavote.net. And again, something that was referred to earlier, if you're voting by mail, you should have received your voting ballot already. In addition, you'll be receiving a second ballot for Measure FD, the LA County Fire Department District 911 firefighter paramedic emergency response measure. Please make sure you return both ballots. Measure FD was inadvertently left off the first ballot, so the county had to send the supplemental ballot. And, yeah, happy Black History Month. If you don't know why we celebrate Black History Month, I'm echoing Ms. Valentine's comments, please take a few minutes to educate yourself on why we celebrate Black History Month. At minimum, I agree with you, people should read up on it, but a lot of us don't read anymore, so maybe at least watch a video. So go on YouTube, you can watch a video from the comfort of your own home. Simply YouTube Carter G. Woodson, who is frequently referred to as the father of Black History Month. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to congratulate the task force. It was nice for the chief to bring him out and kind of show the public what we do on the backend, and with the amount of limited resources we have, you guys do a tremendous job. So to you and the Public Works Department, tremendous work. Wanted to say everyone have a happy Black History Month. Ms. Love, I'm happy to see you back here. Even though you say you're placing your parts, your heart is still good. So as long as that's still pumping, you're not going anywhere for a long time, so I'm glad to see you here. The last thing was to really give credit to Felice and the Finance Department. You guys are really making that into a well-oiled machine. As the City Treasurer mentioned, like we, our investments are actually jumping and the city's, we're getting some blood through our veins, so I'm actually excited to see that, and giving some credit to David on that investment idea. And then just the last thing is the leverage on the mall. Thankfully, we finally, as the city came and put some teeth to it, and we're getting somewhere. So I'm excited, everyone should be happy, and that's it. Happy for everyone watching at home.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Taya?
Oh, no, no. You know, rarely do you get an opportunity to meet somebody that kind of bailed you out, kind of. But I spoke to the chief about this several, several times. I invited a vet to come and stay at my house, and I was going to help them get their ratings squared away and brought him out here from Arizona, and I knew he had a little bit of a problem, but I didn't realize how much until it became a real problem for me and my house. And for a long time, I just didn't know what to do. I finally called the Gardena Vet Center, which I have a relationship with them, and I said, listen, I got this guy in my house, and, you know, it's not working out, and it's getting kind of dangerous and ugly, and I don't know what to do. He said, well, there's this task force that you can call, and they'll, they'll come over, and they'll take care of it, you know, they'll help you, and you want their number? And I said, yeah, give it to me. So I called them, and I had the young lady that was here tonight, Patty, and this police officer, yeah, where is she? Yeah, yeah. And, and this police officer, big, tall guy, and they came to my office, and I explained to them my dilemma, and he said, do you want to go take care of it right now? And I thought, well, that's kind of abrupt. So we went to my house, this vet was locked in the bedroom, wouldn't come out, and been using and drinking and all sorts of things, you know? Knocked on the door, and, and man, they got that guy out of my house. And, and they took him to the Long Beach VA, and I immediately changed the locks. That was the first thing I did. So anyway, it was, it was really something because I was at Wits End, I didn't know what to do. I brought this guy out to help him. I wasn't going to, I didn't want to hurt him. I brought him out here, but it was getting kind of ugly, and, and they came over and they, boom. And she was great, because if I remember correctly, she had a bulletproof vest on. She's a social worker, you know? So you know that the job that she does is a little risky, a little risky. So she's, you know, she's out there writing the trenches. So anyway, Black History, I'm a, you know, I'm a big history buff, and I love to, I don't read very much, though, okay? I'm a documentary guy. So I've seen a lot of documentaries about, you know, the civil rights and, you know, Medgar Ever, people that were really in the beginning, you know, they, they, in many ways, I've forgotten, because Martin Luther King gets all the, and Malcolm, and that, but, you know, there were some guys early on that were really, really critical to move the movement forward. So it's good to see that, you know, it's good to recognize that. It's a very rich history, you know, very painful, but it's also a part of the fabric, you know? It's part of the fabric, so that's a good thing. And, you know, that's it. I mean, I was just really happy to see Patty, you know, because you don't, you don't understand what it's like to have a person in your house that you wake up in the middle of the night and he could have a knife behind, you know? It was really nerve-wracking to have that situation. They came in, they took care of it. And then I'm still very close with this vet, in spite of everything. We still communicate all the time, but, so he didn't get hurt, I didn't get hurt, I learned a big lesson, and thanks to the police, everybody went away happy. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olivia Valentine?
Thank you. That's, that's really very gratifying to hear your story. I think, I think it really personalizes the job that we do. Our, we, we love our task force, and we're very proud of what they do, but when you personalize it like that, it makes, it makes us all feel that these, these efforts that we're taking really work. That's really, that's very personal. So what I wanted to say about Black History Month is that on February 25th, we will have a presentation here in honor of Black History Month by Donzalay Abernathy, who's the daughter of civil rights leader Ralph David Abernathy, and it will be called The Lessons From Selma. Now, she has presented to us before, and I think she's, she's very riveting, so I think we'll, we'll all, we'll all enjoy that, that presentation. I want to thank all of those who participated, who came to the Hawthorne Business Expo. We are going to have a presentation on it in the near future, but right now, I do so want to thank those volunteers who, who helped us. Von Naris, Kwanabowie, who really set up the logistics in the memorial center and really did the heavy lifting, lifting on getting, on, on making sure that, that all of the tables were exactly where they were supposed to be. I've gotten some really good reviews from the Hawthorne Business Expo. People who came said they had a really good time. We had a really huge audience for, for the, a lot, we had over, almost 70 exhibitors, and probably, probably over 300 people in attendance altogether. So I'll have more to say about that when we do our presentation. I wanted to mention something about sidewalk trip and fall injuries, simply because we seem to have been, we've been getting a lot of them recently, maybe not a lot, but we've been getting a number of them, enough so that I think it's worthwhile mentioning. So the city council adopted ordinance 2176 in February 2019, and pursuant to the authority of Section 5610, the majority of cities in California have passed ordinances imposing the obligation for sidewalk repair on adjacent property owners. A survey of 82 cities in 45 states found that 40% of the cities required property owners to pay the full cost of repairing sidewalks. Now, this ordinance, ordinance, the one we passed, 2176, essentially duplicates state law and clarifies that the abutting property owner is not only responsible for repair, but also for injuries caused by damaged sidewalks. I want to make that clear. If someone trips and falls, and it's, and it's outside your house, and it's on your sidewalk abutting your property, you are responsible for it. So I want to, I want to emphasize that property owners should be very careful, watch, look at the sidewalks outside your house. Make sure you don't have any trip and fall hazards, such as an uprooted tree, which is, which is usually part of the problem. So since the city has seen an upswing, upswing in the number of sidewalk slip and fall cases, the city will be cross-complaining against adjacent homeowners to recover its costs in defending these lawsuits. But again, I want to put this on a, put a positive spin on this. We're not trying to, the reason for telling you this is so that you'll be proactive in watching your, watching the sidewalk and looking for possible trip and fall hazards outside your property. Arnie, did you want to add anything to that?
Thank you. Number Valentine, in fact, I was going to mention that we need to also put the word out there that the City of Hawthorne is spending close to $400,000 a year. If you average it, maybe even more, reconstructing sidewalks and ADA ramps and broken curb and gutter every year, year after year after year. So it doesn't mean that city is not doing as much as it can to fix these problems, and in fact, we are doing this proactively, aggressively, a lot better than some of our neighboring agencies. So, yeah, I mean, $400,000 worth of sidewalk replacement every year is, you know, says a lot in itself. So also, we never, ever contacted any property owner to fix their sidewalk. We didn't. What the law says is one thing, but what we practiced has been that we were proactively trying to reconstruct and fix the problem.
Okay, thank you. The last thing I have is to mention that the South Bay Council of Governments is having its 21st Annual General Assembly, and that will be on March 19th. And it's a free event for elected officials, city staff, city commissioners, the community and business leaders, along with the general public. Registration and exhibits open at 8:30 a.m., and the program begins at 9 a.m. It is at the Juanita Millander McDonnell Carson Community Center at 801 East Carson Street in Carson, California. And it's always a wonderful event to attend, and it's free, they just want you to register in advance, and the RSV is required by March 12th at southbaycities.org. The topic this year is intersections of mobility, land use, technology, and finance. South Bay Cog always has really good experts, which give a very good presentation, which, which is a benefit to the general public. So I urge everyone to come, Thursday, March 19th. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Pratim, Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, let me start with Mama Love. So thank you for coming on this week of Valentine, so you brought love to the room and to the world, so thank you for being there, and I know that you still, you know, have some difficult breathing, but your presence just filled the room with oxygen. So thank you for coming tonight. Your presence is welcome all the time. Again, I want to congratulate Dr. Jimenez for the presentation of our voting, because it's very important for people to understand, and, you know, even some of us have seen that over and over, but it's still, you know, because we went to the Neighborhood Association meeting at the North Hawthorne and Holly Park, they were still having questions about this voting system. So it's good for people to, you know, to hear more than once. So thank you for bringing it up. Thank you, Mr. Patterson, for all those investments, all the banking, so we see the fruit pays off, so thank you very much. And to the chief and to the task force, you know that they said, you know, for us to solve the problem of homeless, it has to be all of us giving a hand. for us to solve the problem of homeless, it has to be all of us giving a hand to, to the needy. So by seeing all of your effort and, you know, from the PD, from the public work, from the court enforcement, from the attorney's office, so all working together in the parks, you know, workers together to reach out to those, you know, unfortunate individuals on the street. And, and sometimes it takes courage and, and it takes a lot of courage and, and to go and talk to them because they put their, their safety online, they're healthy, you know, and because all these viruses going on. So they put everything, you know, in jeopardy for, for their own life. So, so it's tremendous work that people do not realize that Hawthorne is a forefront of this task force working with the people in the streets. So thank you very much and keep doing the job well, well done. Congratulations, Ms. Valentine. The business expo was a tremendous success. I was there, you know, I talked to a lot of business and make a lot of connection. So I appreciate it. It was the fifth annual, so well done. So congratulated to you and to all your volunteers. You guys did a tremendous job. So thank you very much. The Black History Month, you know, so, uh, one of the biggest thing in this, in this area is the, uh, the Black History, uh, movies, you know, a film festival at the Balden Hills. So you guys should go there at the Magic Johnson Theater that they have, you know, series of, of, uh, Black History films and especially, you know, movies that come from other countries, especially from Africa. So, so it's good to see, you know, uh, young directors and artists. So it's, it's a fantastic time. So go there, Balden Hills, you know, Magic Johnson Theater have a, a film festival for the Black History. So it's good to see that. Happy Valentine to all of you. It's Friday, uh, so it's special. So it's a long weekend honeymoon. So enjoy yourself, even if you haven't, you do not have a Valentine, but you know, treat yourself, okay? Cause you do, you're the first, most important is yourself. So treat yourself well. So, and God bless and thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, folks, so yes, Black History, but, um, something very important to recognize is that African Americans, blacks have been a participating group here in Southern California for a long time. At the turn of the century, I'm talking 1900s, 1910, 1920s. If you guys don't realize this, but Central Avenue, you see what it is today, but like about a hundred years ago, 90 to 100 years ago, it was a center for jazz on the West Coast, competing with New Orleans, competing with New York. A lot of people came here to, um, as part of their tours to perform on Central Avenue, south of downtown. So that's, uh, they even have a fire station there that was an all-black fire station that's still there. If you drive by, do you look, if you drive north on Central Avenue, you'll still see it on your left-hand side. Another note that's important is, uh, there used to be a beach over here. If you go down this way to the, towards the west and it was a all-black beach. And that's where they, I guess, back then they confined African Americans back then to the, to that beach. And now it's high-priced, two, three million dollar coastal homes. That's like Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach. That's, that's what it was back then. So you know how things change, right? So I took a trip over to Alabama and Georgia and Mississippi. And I did like a little civil rights tour. And, uh, I did the Selma thing. I did the Montgomery, Alabama, you know, all that, you know, all those sites. But the, the one thing that stood out for me was Tuskegee University and George Washington Carver. And he helped start the university like about a hundred years ago also, right? But what surprised me was, uh, if they would have paid attention, he started farming peanuts. And he had like about 300 uses for peanuts, peanut paper, peanut milk, peanut this, peanut that, peanut soap. If they would have paid a little bit more attention and kind of, you know, you know, back then, I guess, people were, you know, you know, there was that element of racism still that like people really weren't paying attention, taking things serious. I mean, we could have had alternatives to like fuel, maybe fueled on peanuts or something and, you know, things would have been different, but that really impressed me that he had 300 uses for peanuts. So there's so much history, guys. Even I think one of the first governors here in California, um, Pio Pico, he was a Mexican guy, but people don't really, really realize that he was a part Afro, a, a black. Because I guess, uh, part of his family, well, some of his relatives and mom or grandparents had a mix over there in, uh, the coastal parts of Mexico. So the, one of the first part, one of the first governors was Afro-Mexican. So there's a lot of history there. So I also want to congratulate you colleague on your great business expo, well-attended. It was great to be there. It's just like every year it's getting better and better and better and better. It's like hard to find parking and everything. So I congratulate you on that. Great job. Let's see, um, I think that's it for, oh, you gotta get them right the first time.
No, sorry, because I mentioned to, uh, I failed to mention, you know, the, uh, the media financial report. Thank you Felice and, and Arnie, thank you for the finance department because it was clear, it was very well, you know, prepared and it's clear to understand. And even that the, uh, our expenditure is a little bit lower than compared to last year.
Yes, let's give it up to Felice and finance director and finance office department.
And I just want to invite everybody for the census complete count committee that's going to be tomorrow at 5:30 at the Berryens Conference Room in, at Memorial Park. 5:30, the complete count committee for the census 2020. So be there, we're going to give you a lot of information for you to take to your community, to your church, to your neighborhood association and to the business, how to talk to people, encourage them to fill up the census 2020. So thank you, have a good night.
So yeah, so there's a lot of things to celebrate, a lot of things happening in the city, a lot of good news that'll be reported very soon. It's a great council that we have up here working together. We don't butt heads, we cooperate, we work together. So everybody's on the same track. So something to celebrate. And, uh, yeah, I mean, what else can we say?
Amen.
All right, amen, right? Oh, and then also, um, one thing that I didn't realize was that Frances Stiglitz, a long time member of our community, passed away about...
Oh no.
You guys didn't know that? Like two or three weeks ago, she passed away. So Frances Stiglitz has passed away. So the police keeper, you know, she was, uh, uh, she was intense. Dynamic, intense, energetic member of our community that contributed a lot of ideas. You know, inspired a lot of thought.
Hope or mind?
Yeah, yeah.
And even ran for council?
She ran for council a couple of times. Yeah, so, um, let's just keep her in prayer. Also, um, I'm going to be closing the meeting in honor of her, in remembrance of her. And also like to, I don't know, some of you don't realize, but Gordon Michael Migo came up here and presented. His brother passed away like about a week ago in an accident. And so we just want to, in an accident, a car accident. I don't want to give details because that's private, he shared it with me. But if you could also, uh, keep Gordon Michael Migo and his, and his brother, who's I think now in, out in Arizona, passed away in like a tragic car accident. Okay? So if we could...
Texas.
In Texas, right? In Texas. So let's, uh, keep both of them, let's have a moment of silence and remembrance of both of them before we go. May they both rest in eternal peace. Okay? Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the closed session item? Anybody want to speak on that? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed or ordered. I'll now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session. I'm going to ask all my council colleagues to, let's head to the back right away so we can get this taken care of. We are in recess.
...
Close, in a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda, Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, yes, the city attorney has been advised. And for a bookkeeping matter, this is item number 28. Before you voted on the Parking Authority Resolution Number 74, I don't believe that you recessed the city council meeting to call to order the Parking Authority. So can you do that now and just revote on number 74?
And we will revote on item number 74. I will recess the regular council meeting and call to order the Parking Authority. I'd like to make a motion on Parking Authority Resolution Number 74.
Second.
Please vote. Can we, can we do a?
Anna?
Roll call? Let's just do a roll call, just for the record. All those, uh, councilmember Awad? Yes? Uh, councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Teyeda?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Protem Montero?
Yes.
And for myself, yes. So it's, uh, five yeses.
Thank you.
And, uh, do I need to recess the Parking Authority to?
Yes, why don't you recess the Parking Authority, call to order the city council meeting?
Yes, I'd like to recess the Parking Authority and call it back to order the regular meeting. Okay? Does anyone else have any further, anything further from council members or staff? If not, this meeting is adjourned.